A good part of the intent of this, allowing for conversions, is to promote housing that covers that very low end of the affordability spectrum.
Yeah, I think the other basis, making sure it's not a living unit, is also because it starts triggering other requisite issues like development impact fees, building rate and everything.
So I think that in part also is part of the reason why it's not required every unit to have both facilities.
Oh, and I get that, that you're not requiring every unit to have a kitchen facility, which I think is great, as long as there's some other provision, be it a centralized kitchen. But to actually say that an SRO can't have both a kitchen and a bathroom, I'm just struggling with that part, that you can't have that, when there is the ability to have something that's not quite a kitchen.
The ordinance actually enables converting hotels or motels to any type of prototype. So you can convert to a group home.
Right.
You can convert to SRO, or you could build an efficiency unit that won't have any issues. So it's just when they decide to do an SRO, they treat it differently by the vote, they treat it differently with all impact fees, ensure traffic rates, everything. And so some of the basis of some of the waivers or incentives to convert to these more transitional or housing types is to provide exceptions to those rules that you've known apply to those type of things. So the idea is that they are more interim transitory housing conditions for houses.
So the ordinance doesn't include a project component from building multifamily housing that decided, or in this case, an efficiency unit, which is treated differently, but allowing some carveback exceptions for SROs that aren't building as independent living facilities to allow more flexibility.
Yeah, I know, and it's a very narrow ability to have an SRO versus an efficiency unit, because I get the difference in the definition. Or it sounds like almost an efficiency unit and a studio apartment is really one of the same.
Right.
Because a studio is one room, kitchen, bathroom.
Yes.
Efficiency unit, one room, kitchen, bathroom. SRO, one room, could have a kitchen, might not be required to have a kitchen, but have cooking facilities and a bathroom, or it might not have them. And I guess I'm trying to get to the flexibility part, which it doesn't say, if it's an SRO and you either have to have a kitchen facility or a private bath, but you can't have both.
You don't have to have either.
Or either.
Have to have either.
Yeah, because it can be, it can be, probably not likely in a lot of the hotels that get converted, primarily because they all have them. I get it if it's to wrap it up, or if they're trying to just change the whole design of hotel or not into something where you do have common kitchen, common restroom facilities, maybe there's some desire for that. I don't, I couldn't imagine it, but, you know, maybe there's something out there. The other question I had was in regards to requiring a general plan amendment or zone change if we are converting the motel to a residential type of unit. So I think part of what we're trying to accomplish here is to make an easy path to change from a hotel that may not be desirable to some sort of more affordable housing. Going through a general plan amendment and zone change seems like an unnecessary step if we have the provisions for development within the hotel conversion ordinance itself, such as open space, such as all the various requirements. And it's an extra step that somebody's going to have to go through beyond the plot plan review, which I get, you want to make sure that the conversion is meeting the intent, which is taking a hotel that is no longer viable and creating low-income residential type of units, so that those units can be rented for the lowest rate possible without having to have to go through a longer process for the general plan amendment itself to change. I'm just bringing that up as a discussion. I believe, and I know what the reasoning behind it is, I get it, because you are going from a commercially used to residential. Totally understand. But I'm thinking even further down the road, what if this conversion occurs, and it's an SRO? And then it fails. Then if somebody wanted to bring it back to the hotel, which everything is there, and is probably in decent enough shape, it could be some sort of hotel type unit, and they got to go back through and do another general plan amendment to unwind what was already done before. And again, I'm just bringing it up for discussion purposes and watching how this gets processed through the system.
I think for the most part, the anecdotal response about how this might be implemented or actually made over time is partially accurate. There are planning zoning laws that require general plan consistency or forming records with activities occurring on the site. But with respect to converting a commercially designated area to allow residential, a mixed use overlay could be applied to that site, as the current practice of the city. And once that's in place, then you'll be able to liberate you to choose between going from commercial use to residential use without seeking another additional general plan amendments. Zoning, on the other hand, would still be an area of concern. The project would still seek general plan amendments. But the general plan amendment that would be implemented would be the overlay. Once that's in place, that would provide that, at least from the general plan. At least from the general plan. The zoning would still be an issue.
The zoning would still be required to go to planning commission, city council.
Right. And I think what we will experience over the next couple of years is that home team property at the state level, where based on the first round, it was granted, the plan is ready, so no zone change or general plan amendment required. So I think most of the initial interest and the program interest is probably pre- decided.
Okay. On the parking requirement of 1.5 spaces per unit, and it kind of goes back to, I don't agree with the 75% limit. But if we had a 100-unit hotel complex, and, let me do that, sorry. What's the parking requirement for a hotel? Is it one per room, 1.2? You know what, and I wish it was.
I think it's fractional. I don't think it's a full one.
It's a fraction? Okay, that's okay. Let's just say that a lot of the hotels are going to go one parking spot per room. But I did a few, you know, little calculations. So if we've got 100-unit hotel complexes, and it's capped by 20, you know, 75% of 75 units, that means that we've got to have 1.5 parking spaces for 75 units, which ends up being 112 parking spaces. And then one for four guests, that's another 18.75. So we're at about 131 parking slots. So how do we have that many, that much of a requirement, even at the 75% limit? There's just not going to be enough parking.
The requirement for like SROs would be 1.5 spaces per unit. But 1.5 spaces exists in residential units in the city.
Right.
So if a hotel converted to all multifamily units, then there would be 1.5 spaces per unit. But if it's an SRO, it's 1.5.
Okay, and I guess I read this, and the way I read it, it looked like the only way you got to the 1.5 was if either all or a portion of the units were affordable. That was how I read it. That was why, that's what brought up my concern, why, you know, I kind of did the math.
And that is the recommendation. That's just for the affordable units. So regardless if it's an SRO, efficiency unit, or a regular multifamily unit, it's 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Anything that's market rate would need to be consistent with it.
Right. So if somebody came in and did a market rate, single room, c, or studio, whatever, all it, then they are not even going to hit the 75% mark. It's going to be even less because of.
Well, I didn't know the answer to this further than actually, but hotel, hotel that has 1.5 spaces per room, plus 1.5 spaces per unit, plus 1.5 spaces per unit. That doesn't mean that existing facilities, oh, in Escondido, they can fly with that, parking spaces for sleeping units required. But the 1.5 parking spaces was added out of incentives to encourage affordable housing conversion, cannot market rate.
Right, no, I understand the purpose behind that. But if somebody wanted to do the luxury.
It might prohibit actually somebody coming in and doing market rate. They could, they could do or follow other applicants that have done it, they have parking records that are restricted, and the process of condition use permit, which allows 25 square meters, there's administrative justice processes, probably less than 100. And that, unless you have a 1.5, you can't develop any facilities. So there's still a pathway to see modification from parking standards. This ordinance would be used as a tool to encourage conversion.
And encourage deed restricted affordable housing. And I guess I'm looking at it from a couple of different perspectives, not only to incentivize the affordable, the deed restricted affordable housing, which I think we should incentivize now, because it's a good thing that we should promote, but also to promote conversion of some of these hotels that are just quite frankly undesirable. And I've seen it in other cities, where some of these other cities have really promoted somebody coming in and changing and converting these rooms over to residential because they're longer term, six months a year type of lease. And they eliminate what has become with certain hotels or motels as a magnet for, you know, prostitution, drugs, gang affiliated activities. We've seen that down in El Cajon. And we had a project that we were working on a couple of years back, where we did just that. And the city didn't have their code for SROs in this conversion. It was like three or four lines. And so it was very, very wide open as to what could be done. We did have to process a condition of use permit to ensure that, you know, the conversion was going to occur in such a way that it was not going to create unintended circumstances. The project was actually very successful in that the city came back to our client and pointed out two other hotels, look at that one and that one, if you can purchase them and do the same thing, it would help. And where it helped was also police service and emergency service, fire. The fire department was always going there, ambulances were always going there, and the police department, it was constant. It was just a nuisance, these few hotels. And then we talked to a few other cities about the same concept of, you know, converting hotels to a residential type unit. And the response that we've gotten, more times than not, was actually very positive because they were nuisance type hotels. And this wouldn't be so for all the hotels, and I don't know about the ones in Escondido, you know, I haven't talked to the police department to find out, hey, which was the problem hotels? Now, I can drive around the city and take a look and go, well, that one might be, that one might be, just because you drive by and you kind of keep your eyes out. So I guess where I'm coming from is promoting this not only for incentives to have deed restricted affordable housing, but also market rate that comes in at a much lower rate than, you know, your standard one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom type of park, because the rents are just going to be, quite frankly, much lower. But not to totally discourage the market rate type hotel conversion. So that's why I'm asking these questions, to get clarity, because I would like to see this. I think this is a good thing for the city of Escondido, to allow for these type of conversions to occur, as long as, you know, the building becomes nice, or we don't have unintended consequences that will happen. But not so much that it's almost prohibitive to a market rate type of person that would come in and could actually make it work, without having, you know, parking requirements that kind of go beyond. So anyway, and this is really to the SRO type unit. When you get into the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, that's residential, that is truly an apartment type complex that needs to meet, I would think, your normal standards. But these SROs, they're very helpful, in my opinion, as a backstop for people that really don't want to be homeless, but they're right on the verge. So apologies for being unwinded, but I thought it was important that you understood where I was coming from.
No, I appreciate it. Are there other questions? Commissioner Don?
Sorry, I wasn't finished. So for the record, I used to live there when I was younger. It was $17 a week. I didn't have my own bathroom. The kitchen was two flights down. Anyway, I actually enjoyed it. So I have a couple more questions. The minimum size of a residential unit resulting from a conversion shall be the same as the minimum size of an SRO. So you did that on purpose? A unit with a bath and a kitchen can still be only 150 square feet?
I believe SRO has a range of.
150 to 400 maximum.
Yeah.
And it says, and another multifamily unit can be also the same. It just seems kind of small.
What provision argument did you bring there?
Thank you. I'm on the bottom of page 20, the last item, C.
So yeah, under the definition of SRO, actually not the definition, but yeah, it provides a range of 150 to 400.
Yeah, B is 150 to 400 for SRO, and C is minimum size of a residential unit, 150.
So that was done deliberately, just to ensure that the resulting housing development was taking full advantage of smaller existing infrastructure.
And then on the next page at the top, number four, general occupancy requirements shared, I'm not sure what that word, what that word is.
It was intended to say that there are occupancy requirements that are listed and enumerated related to be.
Are for.
Are common for all requirements, of course, that is possible.
If you remove that word, it still says that. And then, and for C, is a little bit confusing too. It says number of bathrooms, one bathroom for 10 units? I don't think you mean that. I think you mean one shower, maybe, ten units?
Bathroom facilities as defined by the protocol, that would be complete with shower and toilet.
You'd really allow only one bathroom for 10 SROs?
That would be a minimum obligation, so the project component wanted to install more.
And then five below that, says no more than 110% of the existing floor area, but then six says site coverage, there'd be no maximum. So I could see somewhere that had very little site coverage, you'd say, no, you can't add more than 10%. And it would still be less than something else that's really built up.
Yeah, the objective of the 110% is to make sure that any foreseeable, any project to qualify for that existing facilities is actually foreseeable. And so that's a specific trigger point identified in the classes, because otherwise it's not eligible for that class of condition.
Gotcha.
So that's where the 110% comes from. The site coverage, maximum site coverage, just to acknowledge that there can be a range of existing lodging facilities that may have everything from full coverage to minimal coverage. And so the more objective is to tie any improvements on property to the Florida, which is position five and less relaxed, these site covers.
Okay. And then last one is the 50 square feet. That can be all common open space, I think I'm hearing?
As rewritten, it is useful open space, and the idea is that it would be common.
So no personal open space required? Okay, thank you for.
Other questions? Commissioner Don?
Just a quick question. I'm wondering, I haven't seen any requirement for the transitional hotel to have solar for conserve energy, even though it's transitional, people come in and out, but if you have all occupancy, how, what are we doing to conserve energy?
There is a necessary requirement for new residential classifications. So when the rating official changes from a commercial to residential, or subject to that, it will become standard, it's uniformated.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Raining, do you have any questions for Director Strong?
No, no, but thank you so much to the commissioners for all their questions. I think it just helps a lot.
Yes.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Appreciate your questions. Okay. I just wanted to comment a little. All right, so that closed the public hearing? Did we have an oral communication?
Yes, thank you. This is from Wayland, who's actually in Diego. We represent various property owners, the city of Escondido, and Alried, support today as item number one on the issue of policy clarification regarding proposition as for the booking is right for us. We thank this town for the opportunity to comment on this item, and appreciate your interest in the city of Escondido.
Good. Okay, closing the public hearing, opening the second.
Before we do that.
Yeah.
I did have a question from Director Strong. Did, no, I noticed that we didn't have any communications or anything, or I didn't notice any public outreach or stuff. So I didn't know if there was need for outreach to affordable housing builders or SRO type folks to get their problems on, on the quote, change itself.
There was nothing formally conducted for outreach that the city did publish, notification of the agenda, public hearing. The research that was done was based on prior examples of coordination and reviewing the recently converted project, lessons learned from that, and then also other research that was carried out. And to be quite honest, I think this is going to be an area of our local regulations that's going to need to be continuously monitored and probably adaptive, because what I see in the next two or three years is a great interest in conversions, and they'll probably realize that, or if they don't.
Right.
So I do see this as an area that needs introspection, and that's similar to approaches that have been done with other, the wireless communications facility, which has been asked years ago. I'd say similar situations, it's just something that we have to continuously monitor, and I think so is going to be a good post, or a, or a, interpoke within this section, or before. So I see this as another area where it's going to be just a conversation about what regulations are. There is a need to get something codified, because some of the programs are being implemented within the next couple of weeks. But to answer the question, there was not a proactive effort in staff to engage all of the affordable housing community. Certainly, there are probably rights to, but there are statements that are possible.
Yeah, and I just heard, kind of through the grapevine, that InterFATE might be looking at a hotel, you know, to convert it to some sort of residential type, or group home or something. I don't know their whole program. Like I said, it was kind of through the grapevine, that this is something of great interest to InterFATE. I was just, I kind of thought that they may have reached out and tried, you know, and put out what they needed. Okay, thank you. I'm all done.
Okay. No discussion? Commissioner Don?
Yeah, so I would like to split this into two parts, because I agree that the hotel conversion is going to come up, and I think a lot of these rules are real proprietary, and just make somebody convert. And I don't want Proposition S to come up every time hotel conversion comes up in the conversation. I really don't want Proposition S to be linked to hotel conversion. Like, we can't convert a hotel, we have to vote on Proposition S, because they're not labeled at all. So I really think we should split it.
I'd care if I may respond to that. So there are two options available under that request. One is to direct staff to turn to residential, to handle it, so that the commission can effectively go on each item that's included, although the hotel authority ordinance does depend on the office. The other option is to direct staff to write the paper to the presenting business, because that is essentially the final action, is to take it. Typically, the planning commission has in the past handled a series of actions in the resolution. Good example is the action plan, it's a veto country project. And then it's separated into resolutions for ordinances before the state. So to respond in the context of the request, you can either direct staff to not take action on that, even, and then you can determine the two separate resolutions, or you can simply direct staff to have two separate, one resolution for the process of the commission, and an ordinance for the implementation.
So staff did a good job about presenting Proposition S, about what it does affect, and it's really about increasing.
And, and it's really about increasing density in what's already zoned residential. So none of these hotels are in residential zones. So it hasn't, it really has nothing to do with Proposition S at all. And I think we're, we're, we're losing, you know, Jeff Epp retiring and realizing I might be one of the senior people known the most about Proposition S left, left around. And, and so with, with losing that institutional knowledge, I don't, I just don't want to confuse the public about, about what. What it's built up.
Yeah, I'm Annardine Chair, thank you. The way I see it with the Prop S analysis and, and Mike, Director Strong, please chime in with the EC fit. The reason why it's included with the hotel conversion ordinance is because there may be a question of whether Prop S applies or not to this, to adoption of the ordinance. Um, staff's conclusion and supported by the city attorney's office is it does not apply for the reasons that are in the staff. And to me, it's kind of just the same as like, let's say, a general plan consistency analysis or, you know, CEQA exemption. It's something, it's a threshold we need to, for adopting or approving the actual ordinance. So to me, this isn't about two different things. This is the hotel conversion ordinance. That's, that's the point, point of this item. I know, I know it's titled Prop S analysis and hotel conversion ordinance. Maybe we're giving a little bit too much, too much to that. But I, but I agree with Director Strong that it's something that's important to be on the record as well. Do we need to separate it? I guess, I guess I have, I have difficulty seeing why we would separate it and use it as a standalone item because that wasn't the purpose, in my mind, of why it was raised. I think this is about a hotel conversion ordinance. I, I'd invite Chair Barbay, if you want, Director Strong, to comment on that. That'd be fine, but those are, those are.
Director Strong, do you want to start?
So yes, I, I'm fully accorded with Mr. Whitman. The, the resulting action to bifurcate the two, the standalone resolution for the hotel conversion ordinance is a little extreme in the fact that it's already the position of the city. The city has taken it. The problem is it hasn't been publicized, it hasn't been advertised. So that's why there's probably more prominence in this particular matter, the hotel conversion ordinance, than there would have been otherwise. The analysis that would be included in the standalone hotel conversion ordinance would still make some findings or determinations associating to Prop S its non-applicability to that particular ordinance to make it clear that the threshold had not been exceeded. So I, I think, I think that the commission can handle it either way. The recommendation in the request essentially to exit this agenda item with the batch, whether it be one or two, to go into city council as potentially modified recommendations. So it's up to the commission how it wants it presented, but I, I believe because there is interest at staff level. To make it very well-known to housing builders or investors that Prop S does not apply to regular places, that it is beneficial to have that listed now. So as is, you know, under, under assumptions of the early remarks from the commission, there could be direction to staff to have two separate standalone items presented to the city council. Or if unified together, maybe less confidence in the global prison conceding. But the, the fact remains that the city has taken the position of Prop S and the purpose of tonight is really to highlight what that standing is so that other people know that Prop S will not necessarily apply as to areas that are purpose of commercial and residential project.
It, it was my understanding that you, you wanted to do that, but not, not just for the hotel conversion, or for the whole housing and community investment study.
Yes, the determination that's, that's included in the agenda package. Any unit that the city turns off, this is a Prop S is not applied for any type of project. Still have, and project proponents still have to do the rezoning and general plan amendment process, but it doesn't.
Right, and so that's for anything in the housing and community investment study. That was my thought, not just for hotels.
Well, it's, it's any type of.
Right.
Housing development on commercial. Other questions?
Yes, yes.
Vice Chair Rainey?
I, yes, thank you. So, um, Mike Strong, I just want to confirm that if we say we bifurcate them, the reason why we do that is just for clarity, right? Which is why you're suggesting to do that?
I, I don't.
In the explanation?
I don't believe that was a staff recommendation to necessarily bifurcate it, but it could be presented to the city council in that.
Okay. I just mean during our discussion now, you were just saying for clarity purposes, but okay, thank you.
Any more to discuss?
At, at this point, I don't know what the planning commission consensus is, so that would have to be part of the motion we, so the first motion would have to add modifications to the proposal and the whole.
So we haven't actually landed yet, had a lot of discussions. So any other discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm only kind of curious as to, I mean, I, I went through a whole series of questions. Um, that were concerns of mine, but I haven't heard what maybe the rest of the commission feels about some of those items. And, and through the chair, I don't know how you would like to, you know, we say, yeah, this is talking about the SRO definition, the seventy-five percent limit, you know, those sort of things. So that maybe we could come to some consist, consensus on, on a motion that gets everything all together before we vote on that. Um, because there may be some, some support or no support on, on various aspects that were a concern just to me.
Right, so I was going to head that way. So why don't we take your concerns one by one as well as Commissioner Paul? I think the others, concerns that were raised were not, were not. But let's. Let's start with you, Wayland. Uh, their first one is the seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
Are there discussions, any discussions about that one?
Yeah, that's.
Are there, ever, are there thoughts on the seventy-five percent? Commissioner?
I just don't know why we would put a cap, because it really seems arbitrary. Because we're not looking at how many is now, or how many units there are now. It's nothing about a specific project, it's just an idea. So, I'm completely, I'm completely fine. And I, and I think, I want the standard to be as much, or else we won't get any conversions. If we put too many rules, we won't get any, and like the director said, it'll just come back to us again with the proponents saying they want to make some changes. And I can see it going either way, right? We get no conversions and have to come back to us, or we get a whole bunch of people coming in because we made rules through those, and we have to make it tighter. I can see it going either way. I don't really feel strongly about it, but I do believe a lot of these are just...
Can you just say that for that, if you're making kind of a cap to the other 50s or other things that you would...
I can't speak to every rule of the study, but a majority of them allow less than existing units on site. I believe A is a very common...
And the intention of that is to incentivize alternative use and...
It's to acknowledge that interior amenities would need to be accommodated. Usually there's an onsite property manager. There's also a requirement for shared facilities that one can put in.
From my perspective, there is a good, there's public review involved with any particular conversion, right?
Under this process, a zone change in the general plan would be required.
Right. So it strikes me that that could also be an opportunity for the public, for us to make a change at that time.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's what my thought is, is that we need to have to help incentivize folks to do this kind of work, and then through the review process, right, to assure that there are sufficient amenities provided for it.
So, we're, through the review process, we're assuring that they're meeting the code as far as the amenities that are required. Yeah, I'm still of the opinion that we really want to help facilitate getting these conversions done. Placing a cap, I think that it doesn't provide that, that level of, you know, that incentive, so to speak. I think it starts hamstringing whoever might come in and want to do this conversion, and then it doesn't promote getting that low-income type unit out to the people that need it. And I understand what Mr. Reilly's saying, which is, yeah, you have to have, you know, different side channels. I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, because there's a whole variety of people out there that are, you know, on the verge of going homeless because they can't afford a place to live. But I'd like to see these things get out as quick as possible to reduce the number of people that are actually going into homelessness. I mean, and it's happening every day, and we see it all throughout our city, all over the place. I mean, it's one of the biggest things that is discussed with all the various people that I talk to, you know, residents, friends, family, business community. That's their biggest issue right now, is homelessness. So, for us, it's hard to put a cap on the number used. I don't think it's, it's the smart way to go where we're at today. Now, maybe, if we start getting in and we get an inordinate amount of these conversions, and it's just having unintended consequences, wow, we spelt that pretty quick. And I think you can spelt it relatively quick after the first or the second one. And that, we need to increase the, you know, the 50 square feet of amenities, you know, that might help, because you don't have enough people staying there on their property. They're out trying to use other facilities. I don't know, there seems to be a variety of things that can occur, but just a cap, I'm, we still don't know.
Any other comments on the cap? Vice Chair Rainey, do you have any comments on the 75%? I don't. Okay. So, another issue, include that in the motion, see if it applies, if you can do that.
Sure.
But let's go to the other ones, though, before we get, just to have a full discussion there.
Yeah, the definition for SRO, where it said that you can't, that you cannot, the definition does not allow for both a kitchen and a separate bath. And it's just three words that I would like to see struck.
Yeah, so, if it's, if it includes both, it just becomes an efficiency. So what I'm not clear on is what the development standard, the difference in the development standard talk between SROs and efficiencies, because that's the bottom line.
And it may be the kitchen, the definition of a kitchen versus cooking facilities.
Yeah, our code defines kitchens, there is something new in the government code section that introduces something called an efficiency kitchen, but it's only tied to junior accessory drawing units. So it's in section 65, P52. But it doesn't define what an efficiency kitchen really is, or what it means. So there is some efficiencies in the current statute, and certainly that doesn't apply to anything other than the inner kitchen. But it does introduce an interesting concept about maybe having a different use of food preparation spaces, not a whole kitchen. So, SROs can certainly have food preparation areas, you know, that are equipped, but under the current recommendation, that's really is treated differently from an efficiency or a multi-family unit, because it doesn't have both, so it doesn't have like, so if you're going to make it include those or allow those, then there's some conflict because maybe an SRO or...
Well, I guess from my perspective, I don't see the harm in removing those three ones. I think it's, it's just an additional hindrance, so to speak. Because definitely we have to go and follow the building code, whatever the building code says that you need to have, as far as, as your kitchen or cooking facility.
However, if that's going to be limited by the definition, why not include it now? I mean, why not have it?
Because we defer, we just defer to the building code, as opposed to limiting it, limiting it via this definition.
Amen.
I have a couple of questions for Director Strong regarding the kitchen permit. Is it true that there is, you are required to have a permit to, for kitchen? There's a definition for kitchen and a cooking area, correct or no? I'm curious.
Yeah, the building division issues something called PVE permits, it's mechanical plumbing or electrical plumbing.
Yes.
You have to get a plumbing permit for different fixtures, or like...
So, is that the reason why we are limiting between which unit has kitchen and which unit should have kitchen or bath? Is that, is that the reason why?
Well, the purpose of the definition is to distinguish it from, from the types of units, and then provide reduced standards for those types of circumstances, because they are a little bit different, more transitory than not really, or... So, the objective is to create a, and tease out, it's a certain unit type that doesn't need to be required to be fully upgraded with full facilities, that when triggered, our development impact is the same as if it was a multi-family or efficiency unit, which would be covered by that. So, the desire of the project proponents is to have multi-family, they would love those codes, they need to have multi-family, there isn't a need to even address that. But this is hardly out of the exception for those project proponents that may want to do something a little bit different, maybe reduce the investment into the conversion, because there's interest in getting them online quickly. So instead of budgeting every unit with a kitchen and a half facility, creating common areas for that purpose, this E-standard thing.
So it's increasing flexibility for the developer, for the opponent?
Because the alternative is not to have a...
Right.
Right, and that's the example that I should have brought up, but it's, some of these, and especially the SROs, they're not apartments. Apartments are apartments, and people can live there via at least six months, a year, for years and years and years, which is great. That's not what these SROs, they don't think are really intended for. I think it's to be a backstop, keep people from becoming homeless. Get them into a position where they can maybe save up some money, and then move back up into, you know, the regular apartment, long-term type apartment living, that this isn't their end solution, that this is just, you know, you have people rotate through, six months to a year, and then they're off and good, and they're back to going where they, you know, may have come from originally.
Right, but now, if I'm a developer, and I'm going to build a bunch of efficiencies or studios, and I can save my development fee by calling them an SRO instead, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Well, that may be one of the things, it's to bring the cost down.
Right, right.
Bring the rent down, and then help these people move.
And we're just going to call it an SRO, not really.
Yeah, there's no doubt, it's a money-saving type of issue, but it's also not creating a long-term solution to a short-term potential problem by some of these folks that are just on the verge of going homeless. Get them back and, and up where they really probably came from. A majority of these homeless people, bad luck, things happen, and all of a sudden, they're out of their apartment at $2,000 a month and into an SRO that may be...
Or just lower the development fees for studios. The same thing.
I'm looking for the flexibility, I'm not looking at changing development fees by any means, but don't, don't put the restrictions on how this gets developed such that they, the conversion doesn't. That's my motivation.
So, I see it a little bit differently, I guess, that, that by enabling or promoting SROs, that it is actually a viable and important piece of the model, and so that you're assuring options for a project, they don't have to select or choose to do a part. But, but if they do, there's a certain standard associated with that, which enables those, that particular level of transient type person who might need to be out there to sort of create that, that, that studio. Any other comments on this one? Vice Chair Rainey?
Yes, yes. I tend to agree with you in to just distinguish the difference between the two, or between the different definitions in a sense, so I definitely agree with you on that.
Okay. So, there was, do you have one more?
Parking.
Yeah, parking.
I think, again, for these efficiency units or, or SROs that are not deed restricted, I think 1.5 parking spaces per unit is excessive. Right now, we've had a lot of projects come before the planning commission, regular market rate apartment-type units, and we are agreeing to reduce parking. These particular units are the perfect example of something that really does not require 1.5 parking stalls per unit, especially the SROs and the, the efficiency type units. So, I, I think that 1.5 is excessive, I'd like to see something closer to 1. And then guest parking, maybe 1 space per 8 units versus 1 space per 4.
I have a question on that one, in regard to requirement for parking space. Director Strong, is that a requirement to have parking space per unit by the code or no?
Our, well, 39 of the study does stipulate parking ratios for the residences, and it's based on that, you know, so that should be student units, have one standard, and that would be, that must be, so for the objective of the hotel conversion was, was to provide a use parking requirement incentive for deed restrictive or lemons, and it sounds like there might be interest in expanding that for any type of, you know, regardless of support. And so, that would require a couple of additions from our calculations to the existing language as provided in the research. But, the guest parking requirement is a standard that's applied to all hotel, all hotels regardless of the number of items, and that's 1 per 4 of the 0.25 space per unit. So, what was intended to achieve, the draft one, is to incentivize affordable housing, so regardless of the, and that would be way for the smaller projects. So anything that would be 30 would be, would be strictly, would be pushing that in terms of 30.
Well, because these projects of transitional hotel, and especially for homelessness, how many, I'm asking this question in very objective, in, in a very objective way. How many people that homeless own cars?
Well, it, sorry, we interrupted.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't necessarily, the standards don't apply just to the homeless, it applies to any occupant that will utilize that. So, as discussed earlier, it could be those that are in danger of moving out, or maybe just new entry markets into needing new household formations. So, it doesn't necessarily apply just to the homeless, it applies to any capital or any occupant. And some of these may be market rate, not necessarily be related to transitional or housing.
And with respect to the homeless, oftentimes they're living in a car, that's also considered. Okay, other comments about parking?
Yeah, just, an SRO, even if it's not deed restricted, is going to qualify for low-income housing.
The market rate, rent rate for that would likely be...
Right. So, if it's, so I agree, if it's, if it's an SRO, we shouldn't require 1.5 parking spaces. Right. You know what? I, I think this isn't, this ordinance isn't designed around SROs versus larger apartments, it's designed around deed restricted or not, and I think that's the mistake. We do it for SROs instead of deed restrictions, I think that's a better approach.
So, we would, so what we, we have 1 space per SRO apartment?
I think the half a parking space is one.
I mean, the half a space per unit, I think, is the incentive to have deed restricted affordable house. I'm all for it. I think the 1 space per unit for an SRO would be more than adequate, or minimally adequate. I think 1.5 is too much. And again, we're seeing regular apartment complexes come in, those right now, asking for less than 1.5.
Okay, so, I, you know, I didn't think about 0.5 parking for deed restricted larger ones. So, say, deed restricted is a half parking space or an SRO is a half parking space.
If this commission would, would like to have 0.5 parking spaces per SRO, okay, I mean, I wasn't suggesting that much of a reduction, I was looking at just 1 spot for each SRO, and, and, and a reduction in the number of guest parking, because you're going to get certain folks that just don't have a car. Why? Choose not to, can't afford one, whatever reason, and they're bicycling, and there are provisions in here to provide per bicycle locker area, which I think is a great thing. So, you know, is 0.5 divided out? Maybe. I could support that, for sure. I'm suggesting at least 1, but not 1.5.
1 is too, I think 1 is too many. Yeah, sorry.
Other comments? Commissioner Strong?
There might be, the, 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 so I'm pleased to make sure that it's, especially by, you know, 5, 4, 5, 5, and the, 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 the.
Vice Chair Rainey?
I'm receptive to making it 1 parking space, but not 0.5.
Thank you. Any other comments on the parking issue? Is that your last one?
And then there was just a clarification wording in the proposed code itself, on page 22, under common areas and open space, and it's item 9, subsection 8. If we could, it says not less than 50 square feet of usable open space area. If we could just add in there usable, common, and open space area. So, I think that that would help promote maybe some additional indoor facilities, whether it's meeting rooms, common meeting rooms, common recreation area, or workout area, or something, but we get both the indoor, we include both the indoor and the outdoor usable open space. And it was just purely for clarification, because it seems like that was the intent. Chair?
So, the current language supports 50 square feet of usable open space that could be interior, exterior, private, or common, it's just vague to be implied. And it sounds like you want to just be more correct in its universal application, less everything.
That it just, yeah, that it actually says it right there, common and open space area. Because it does say it in the, in the very beginning, it says it right on the top of item 9, that this is common and open space, common and, common areas and open space, but it just doesn't say it in this one right item. I, I don't, I would just hate to have somebody misinterpret that intent at some point in the future.
Okay, so, well, I think perhaps the best way to approach this is to go through the handbook, and then we can get a sense of what my thought would be in the actual motion to discuss.
Yeah, that, that might actually work.
Though I'd like to finish all the various issues, just to make sure we have final clarity on what it is under the plan of, so Commissioner Paul, you have it?
Yeah, nothing, nothing else on that part, except to split them into two, into two...
Yeah, the bifurcation, that's the split number two.
Chair Barbe, there was a text change recommended to one of the sections, a shared, general occupancy requirements, shared for group homes. I think Commissioner Paul mentioned, this is on page 21, subsection 4.
Yeah, just to take out the one.
General occupancy requirements 4, eliminate the share. One, one.
Wait, I'm sorry, where was that? 22?
Okay, it's 21, subsection 4, the top of the page, first one.
Yes, did delete shared? Yeah. I deleted it. Okay, I'll do that one, too.
And I suppose, actually, when a motion is made after the tally vote exercise, that any page references should probably refer to the exhibit to the resolution, since that's what is the reference to make on the page. So rather than page 21, I'm happy with that. Elsewhere, the exhibit of the resolution, where the reference to the change should be made.
So which, which exhibit is that, and that's exhibit B? Or you mean in the actual redliner, redline text, right?
Yeah, we've been referring to the redline text, so the page 1, 21 reference on this last particular item.
Right.
Actually should be referring to page 40 of exhibit B.
I think it's B. Yeah, because exhibit B is the actual word, as, as would be proposed to...
So, the planning commission is making recommendations to the, the resolution, should be referring to the resolution.
Okay. All right. Paul, you got it? Okay. Well, have anything you need to add to the whisper handbook? Vice Chair Rainey, did you have any other issues to add to the handbook?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, Joanne, maybe you can help us with this one, just the user, if we could just, like, give the tally as we go. Okay, so, let's start with, let's start with bifurcation. How many, or which commissioners would you go vote for bifurcating to, such that we have a resolution on the, I mean, the ordinance, and then separately, roughly, as I said, for the... Vice Chair Rainey, how are you voting on that?
I'm going to go with no.
Okay. Do I get that?
We have Wyler, Paul, Barbe, Ramirez, John, it's Roger, yes, Vic, and Rainey, who know, Vic.
Okay, so that's, we will include the bifurcation?
No, I'm sorry, Chair, is that to bifurcate and return to the planning commission, or when it's elevated to the city council?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just in this, I was, to the city council, that it would just be presented?
I just want to make sure that's acceptable to all the people that...
No, good point. I'm sorry? That's fine?
Yeah, I was confused. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear, this is how, this is how it would be presented to the city council, that's two separate issues, however, one is a, an ordinance, yes, it's a new order.
Right, just questioning this, would they still go the same night? Because, because it is part of the story, so to speak, even though it's kind of a...
Right, you're going to have to have the resolution regarding Prop S before you adopt the hotel conversion ordinance, because that needs to be established first. And just to clarify, if you're bifurcating it the first, that's just limited to Prop S, that's not, as I understand it, Commissioner Paul has clarified, that's not limited to hotel conversions, you're making a policy statement, or confirming a city's, you know, understanding of Prop S, be it the resolution regarding the non- applicability of Prop S to...
Right, absolutely, absolutely, that's my point, right, absolutely.
So therefore, that we share it first and discuss, and then the ordinance.
Right, right.
Okay, so, yes.
Can we ask Vice Chair Rainey, she wanted to change how she decided because it was unclear?
Yes, thank you.
So, yes on that one? To bifurcate, to counsel?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the question. All right. So, reducing the 75% conversion, and making it, and just not, you know, not including any kind of percent of conversion of units. Do you recall that? Uh, how many would vote to, uh, redact the seventy-five percent requirement? I'm voting. Uh, Vice Chair Rennie, how are you voting?
Yes.
So, questions?
Four. Um, Wyler, Paul, Barbe, and Rennie, and then commissioners?
Yes.
Roger, who no. Let it be.
Okay. Okay. Uh, parking? I'm sorry, the definition of SRO. So, are we gonna leave it in there to, will we leave the SRO definition as is, in the recommend, in the language, or do we change it to be treated differently?
No, it was just to eliminate the words in the definition. Um, it says each SRO unit consists of one combined living or sleeping room with a closet, and may contain either a kitchen or separate private bathroom, but not both. My recommendation is to remove the words, but not both. So it's to create that flexibility.
So you can create more flexibility, not require them, not, not requiring it either or.
And not restrict it, just remove it. We've still gotta follow the codes and everything regardless. It just, it does provide that flexibility.
So, so we do a hand vote for yes, to, to redact those words?
Yes. That would be, uh, my recommendation, yes.
Right, so are we voting, so are we voting for a hand vote, or yes, we will redact those words? Are there any yes?
Can I just intervene to, uh, to clarify, just from my, my understanding? You know, have been tasked with advising on the code, uh, if this is adopted. So, you wanna remove but not both, but you wanna re, you wanna leave in either or?
Yes.
Because to me, that still doesn't solve the problem, I think, that, that you're going for, which is, you would like to see SRO units that do have both, or could have.
Yes.
And I think by leaving either or, to me, I would interpret that as,
you're gonna eliminate the kitchen, or you're gonna eliminate the bath. You're gonna eliminate one of them.
Right.
I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna elim, make that a requirement, that for an SRO, you gotta eliminate either the kitchen or the bath. But you could have them both, but you don't have to have them both.
So the words may contain either a kitchen or separate private bathroom, but not both. I think the word either.
The either is what makes it.
Right. I would say, and may contain, I mean, I don't like to use and/or, but that's kind of what you're going for, right? And may contain a kitchen and/or separate private bathroom.
And eliminate?
Eliminate but not both.
Sure, if that's more dramatically correct. But that's the intent that I'm, that I'm, um, you know, that I, I want to say, sure.
Uh, Commissioner Wyler, which page are you on?
Page sixteen?
It's page thirty-five.
I was gonna say, in the actual.
Oh, sorry.
Page thirty-five? Yes, thirty.
So the recommendation from Kurt Woodman is, is probably most efficient. The other alternative is, you can simply striking out but not both, say, or.
Right.
But and/or is probably more adequate.
So a kitchen and/or separate private bathroom?
I, I actually like Director Strong's, because I'm not a big fan of and slash or. So what I would say is, and may contain, cross out either. A kitchen or separate private bathroom, comma, cross out but not, and add or, both. So it may contain a kitchen or separate private bathroom, or both.
That's, that's, that's much, much straightforward.
Thank you.
All right, so can we have a hand vote on? Excuse me, Chair Barbe, I thought I heard Vice Chair Rennie trying to speak. Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Vice Chair Rennie.
Hi, so I just have a quick question. If we do change the definition, does that make it common with another, um, I mean, I know the SRO definition works for, to distinguish it from the other ones. If we change this, does it then make it confusing or muddy? I'm just curious.
Does it present a gray area?
Because I like.
For review.
Yes, thank you, Chair Barbe. Uh, Commissioner Rennie, staff is probably a little concerned about how to administer SROs that do have both, because of the overlap with other terminologies for unit sizes.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's what I thought, okay. So I'm gonna vote no to modify that, just because I'm a lawyer and I don't wanna cause more confusion. I absolutely understand where Commissioner Wyler's coming from. I'm all about making things easier, but not if it's gonna make things more confusing. So thank you.
If I, if I can intervene, uh, the SRO unit, uh, references California Health and Safety Code, section seventeen-nine fifty-eight point one. Uh, the, the means of living or efficiency u, efficiency unit as defined by California Health and Safety Code, section seventeen-nine fifty-eight point one. And seventeen-nine fifty-eight point one, uh, states that a city may permit efficiency units, dot, 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 which may also have partial kitchen or bathroom facilities, as specified by the ordinance. So to me, the California Health and Safety Code does provide the authority for the changes that we were just discussing.
And does provide flexibility to the application?
I, I think it makes it consistent with the intent of California law.
I agree.
Okay, so then it will not make it muddy? So will it, I just wanna make sure that I'm voting appropriately. After that was, that code was read, I just, the health code, I would just wanna make sure.
Uh, Mr. Woodman?
Well, I think that the muddiness is not really, uh, a legal issue. That sounded like something Director Strong was concerned about, so maybe he can elaborate on that.
Okay.
Uh, to try and simplify his suspicion that a developer wants to build an efficiency unit, making building efficiency unit. You wanna build something different, which creates, so that's what this, the proposal is in.
I see. Okay. So, uh, I'm gonna make a, a proposal here that, uh, we'll, I'll read this sentence as amended, and we can vote on that. Each SRO unit consists of one combined living and sleeping room with a closet, and may contain a kitchen or separate private bathroom, or both. How many vote yay on that language?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rennie, are you voting yes or yes on that?
No.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with no.
So the rest of us are no? But, um, I'm, I'm, uh, Commissioner Wyler, and I think Commissioner Paul voted yes to that?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, see, I didn't. All right, so then Commissioner Wyler said yes, and the rest of us are no. Okay. So, I guess now I should do a hand vote to have the language standardized? Vice Chair Rennie, are you in accordance with that?
Yes. Yes, please.
Five, six. So let the language stand as it is? That way, uh, we, we, we can do that. Uh, parking? Uh, parking, so, it sounds like, I'd like to suggest that we have one parking space per SRO, and quite close, the rest.
And the half a parking space for de-restricted?
Yeah, I think that's already in there. So, just to clarify, what I was after was one parking space per, um, per unit, and something less than the one, or one guest parking spot for units. I think that's excessive. So, suggestions?
So instead of one per eight, you suggest one per four?
No, it, instead of one per four, I was looking more maybe one per eight.
Ah. Thought? Vice Chair Rennie, you have any comments on the parking?
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with the one parking space per SRO, and I think the suggestion of one per eight is fine.
Okay, so we have a vote on that one, hand vote? Uh, how many votes, how many commissioners vote for SROs that have one per six, and one per eight together?
Aye.
Aye? Six? Seven?
Oh, okay, and to be clear, then, the rest of the parking stays per staff recommendation?
Right. Just, I wanna repeat this, because I think the next place, I wanna make sure you do that, and you're giving it correct. So it'll be, uh, one parking space per SRO, and then one guest parking per eight. Right, right. All right. And then clarification in the wording on page twenty-two, number nine A. So that would actually, of course, find their expenses in the actual ordinance, right? Is that your position, Paul? Uh, maybe that was part of mine. Yeah, that was.
On that, on page forty, uh, forty, page forty-nine? Page forty-seven, forty. Page forty, uh, paragraph four. Just remove the words.
Right. So are we doing with that? Hands up for yes? Right.
Aye.
Yep. Okay, that's unanimous, for yes. All right. And the fifty, fifty percent usable common rooms?
Yeah, that, that would just be, um, the clarification on page forty-one. Uh, on that page, item nine, common areas and open space, subsection A, should read not less than fifty square feet of usable, and then add it into that, common areas and, and then continue on, open space area.
Continue with open space area as well as amenities?
Yeah, the rest is.
Right. So you would say?
So it's just a clarification that this does include, uh, common areas.
Yeah. So it would read all hotel and hotels' conversions shall include common areas, such as open space and amenities, et cetera?
Yeah, all, all of that's fine. The change comes in that subsection A.
Oh, I'm. Not just A. So where would that, how would that read then?
So, uh, subsection A would read not less than fifty square feet of usable, then with the added words, common areas and.
Hmm, okay.
And then it continues on, open space, and et cetera.
Get a hand, hand, uh, yeah?
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous as well. All right. So, I think that's all I have for issues of note, that we needed to do a hand vote on.
Chair Barbe, um, as part of that approved tally vote item, as it's made into, into a motion, uh, the downtown specific plan does, um, have a definition for usable outdoor space, so we'll have to make sure that what's codified is supersede, um, that in its application. The downtown specific plan requires it to be outdoor space. So we'll just make sure that when a hotel's converted, and it is within the downtown specific plan, that what is being suggested for approval to the city council is to supersede that version as it's applied on hotel.
Could we address that when we get onto the downtown specific plan? I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, this is for hotel conversions.
Correct, yeah, and, and I'm just, I'm speaking to the, the fact that the downtown specific plan, uh, defines what usable outdoor space is, or common, uh, recreational space. And so we wanna make sure that whatever is being advocated by the planning commission is superseding any other conflicting statements in other policy documents that would be essentially referred to during the process of a hotel conversion. We want you to make sure that that is applicable, and would supersede, like I said, other conflicting statements.
So do we need to include that in the language?
Uh.
Is that something that you all would require, include in guidelines for review?
I'm, I'm kinda wondering if, are you saying that by making this change, are we being inconsistent with the specific plan, or?
Well, just when, when these entitlements are reviewed, is there, uh, staff level? Part of that analysis is to form a, a, a plan. Hotels exist throughout, primarily in the city corridors, where there's often a south city, any south city that's in the specific plan, and some in the downtown specific plan, and some beyond other specific plan values. Uh, so when the matter is being considered by the planning commission, we wanna make sure that there's conflicting, uh, regulations over common open space. So, the language that's gonna be motioned, I'm just gonna make sure that it's superseded and verified.
And I, and I guess, because this only pertains to hotel conversions, not other development within the specific plan.
Correct.
It, it, it would seem to me like this would kind of supersede that.
Did, did, didn't, didn't we already do that by making it only fifty feet? You just overrode all of it?
Yeah, because my, my intent is not to use this to go to the level of fifty square feet of usable open space for the rest of the.
Yeah, no, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't do that.
I think that's a separate issue.
It, it is specific to hotel conversions. If that hotel conversion is occurring in the downtown specific, we wanna make sure there's no conflicting policies in the specific plan. That would then create confusion for, uh, you know, the city staff or the decision makers. Um, I, I think if you're expanding the definition to say indoor and outdoor, um, I think that's okay. And I think the ordinance that is codified has a conflicting provision that if there's any other ordinances that are conflict, that have to supersede it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, uh, I'm not sure if a zoning amendment will supersede a specific plan.
So, what was the wording that was just voted on? You can re, restate that.
Page?
Where's the wording change?
Yeah.
Page forty-one, item nine, nine A.
Common areas and open space. All hotel and hotels' conversions shall include cl, common areas with amenities such as seating tables, barbecues, et cetera.
I mean, it seems pretty clear to me that it is specific to conversions, where, where a specific plan that allows for an SRO, you've still gotta follow it under the specific plan signs.
Right.
Now, if, if we wanna address SROs in a specific plan, I think that's a separate, separate issue.
Yeah, and that would, that could be, we could punt on that, and that could be dealt with for individual projects that happen to be in a specific plan.
Yeah, or, yeah, or we change the specific plan to be consistent with this, if we so chose. Right. I, I don't think that's what the intent is tonight. This is specifically for the conversion process, versus how do you build an SRO anywhere else in the city? This is specifically for the conversion process versus how do you build an SRO anywhere else in the city.
Okay. Good to go, alright, so, I think we're ready for a motion. Could it be? Yep. Alright.
You, you might be better prepared than I am for the, for the motion. I, I mean, I have my notes, but I think you were taking really good notes.
Well, I was trying to. Why'd you cut me off? Um, so, the motion would be to, uh, accept the, the ordinance, first of all, to bifurcate the ordinance on the process of conversation, process resolution. And then that will go first to city council, followed by the, uh, ordinance review. That's one, we're voting. Uh, the second thing is, is the definition of SRO that I think we both.
I think that one failed, uh, and.
By that one, so we don't need to have that one. And we don't, and the parking, we are going to change to say one parking space per SRO, um, and one space per eight, I mean, one eight, one, one space per eight minutes, forget.
For the market rate.
Good mark. Alright.
And there was to.
And then the clar- clarification and wording on page twenty-two, nine A, uh, which was to drop the, the word shared by. And.
And it was removing the seventy-five percent limit.
We decided.
Did that one go down as a no?
No.
Yeah, I thought, I thought.
Yeah, I was getting to that, yeah, and, uh, the seventy-five percent limit on conversion was, would be the deck, it would be up. Okay. So that's the one.
I'm sorry, here, um.
I can second it.
What, okay, but we have a clarification from Park, second to Park.
Hmm, sorry. It's okay, I was trying to come to that here, um, but the ordinance, not that it's going to, like, come up, and maybe it's, yeah. Parking space, one parking space per, I mean, one parking space per eight, uh, when you get parking space, right?
Remind me.
Yeah, when you put, when you put. Um, when you put shared, and, and seventy-five percent is the way they implement it.
Just.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So, um.
If.
Right. From the ordinance.
Is it that one?
Um, yes. Yep.
Are there that common, did you mention the common areas, open space language?
And the two on language, right?
Yeah, the two on, common space, yeah, the, I'm sorry, yes, to also include group homes or quarter, quarters, common space, and multi, oh, shoot, sorry, not less than fifty square feet of usable. Common areas and open space shall be provided for each SRO here. That's the new language. Okay, so that's the motion, uh, Vice Chair Raining already seconded it.
Oh, I, she did the first on that.
Uh. Oh, I did, I made, I made the motion because I just, sorry, because I, that's why I told Mr. Al. Okay, so now we're through roll call. Chair Barbe. Yes. Commissioner Don? Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approved.
Vice Chair Raining?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez? Commissioner Serrato? And Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
You seconded here. Well, good. Alright, public hearing, agenda number two, downtown specific plan amendment, planning case number PL two-one oh-two-two-seven. Uh, first, are there any disclosures? This is relating to the, uh, amendment to the downtown specific plan to change zoning regulations to require ground floor commercial uses only at key locations or pref- preference areas based on context or planning objectives, rather than as a blanket requirement to ensure future projects are feasible and the desired community character is preserved. So, are there any disclosures on that? Vice Chair Raining, do you have any disclosures relating to this?
No, I do not, thank you.
Hearing none. Uh, is there a staff?
Yes, thank you Chair Barbe.
Any questions?
Director Strong. As public hearing, I would like to do a specific plan for downtown area and specifically to address the ground floor retail requirement. Uh, the housing element, which is provided by statute, there's a section of six-five-five-eight-three-eight-five that requires cities to analyze potential constraints of housing elements. And then under that same section, C three, uh, there is a requirement to potentially mitigate those potential for actual constraints. And so, uh, the city has been taking housing updates. It's been long, it's long, that's the ground floor retail requirement, and strains, undoing these areas housing elements. It's something that was presented back in two thousand eighteen, in the early action communication having to address the housing element, uh, as part of the city code, uh, name study. And, uh, although it's, it's about reach, but not also the point for this particular effort, ground and area, developers, proprietors, all you owners agree that the retail requirement is restricted. But, the state has specifically access to address, the city to address this requirement that is restricted to housing elements. Uh, so the city really needs to look at this specific plan as a planning plan, which is included as a question to, to step report in this. Uh, and identify key locations where there are potential areas to maintain retail requirements on ground floor, and base that off of planning objectives or community, uh, character, interests, uh, rather than having that limited requirement throughout the year. So as part of it, I do the fact that it's attached to, um, there is bigger, even more, uh, there's a distraction from existing that's specific. And a lot of areas, especially in the boroughs, this is a part of the areas to be voted on, now they're second or third, require to employ the requirements, and simply have restored, recycled, and positive. The part of the overall is, um, which is being included in this planning case, uh, of the resolution twenty-two-one oh-seven, is including both map addresses and the text in this to the downtown specific plan to address, uh, two straps, one to subject a opening to the retail requirement, and subject the city in this particular, that they catch areas to let the ground floor residential allow, I think greatly is standard, probably most notably, in the areas that came to the downtown area, so the areas that are, uh, south of Third Avenue, uh, areas that are east of Ivy, areas that are west of City Parkway, now have, uh, general licenses for ground floor residential. Previously, it planned to offer permanent and ground floor facilities. And as evidence, the recent developer project, uh, with the second coming of its senior apartments, it's in alley, uh, there has been interest to modify this site to allow ground floor. So the second problem of this analysis is to develop a new zoning district of the neighborhood allowing natural, obviously, to let, perfect area. These are key areas where ground floor residential can be allowed, but, um, the city should facilitate, uh, the form of new structures so that they can adapt to be reused as commercial. So the idea is to have retail-ready houses in those areas, so the property will have, at their own time, an interest in determining how it will be adapted. So this is the map amendment proposed in this specific plan. And then there is, uh, a new section as the fact of the line, uh, section, uh, to suggest new guidelines and standards, uh, for indoor, air, and floor, ground floor, policies. And that's included in the city resolution, and that is being presented on the slides. Uh, the idea is to have places with interactions, small office headquarters, have the space, interior space, designed as retail-ready, and the exterior presence to have, like, most storefronts appearance. But what occurs in the site will be up to the developer and company. Uh, Vice Chair Raining, this is ideally located in the ground floor. And then more importantly, buildings can apply to the, the built-out of these new residential units would need to be occupancy classifications for multi-use, so that if the site converts to ground floor commercial, that there isn't significant upgrades to the facility, uh, to be done at that period. So the city has prepared a, a new, just called the second amendment, to, you know, prepare for the initial thought of the downtown specific plan. And so the set, again, there is the knowledge, uh, the package is slightly changed since initial consideration there aren't any new information or any circumstances which have something to do with, regarding the property. Uh, that is also to, as I said, very much. Um, established by the, the, the commission, about the resolution, and recommend.
Do you want to answer that for oral? But I don't think there is.
I don't think there is.
Yeah. Uh, question?
Yeah, so just one question, you talked about, uh, public input. Did, um, anybody that said they can't sell retail, say they could sell it as residential if it looked like retail? If it was fifteen foot high, with, with glass in the front door or side door, who could live in it?
Yeah, the, the issue with the excuse, um, well, it, it's an emerging prototype, and when I say emerging, it's probably been out the last twenty years, that it's becoming more common, I think, for downtown areas. And the issue is that it's, it's very difficult to finance, and most often developers completely write off or underwrite the commercial component because they can't make any assumptions about filling that space. Uh, so truly, it's, it's been something that's been underperformance. If you think about our downtown and how many projects that have been built to actually have ground floor space, the only project that I can think of that has been built is City Plaza, uh, which had a very much, and I think it went to, or, or, if ground floor commercial space went into it, but even then, I think they were trying to convert it to residential. So, it, it just isn't financially solvent for property owners, a lot of property owners, especially if they're not in key areas. So what this specific plan amendment request does, which we mean now, is to acknowledge that there aren't any key areas, because it's important to the right house, and we have to, and we have to have a best synergy. Primarily, there are, there are already, there's, there are policies that are objectives for the vision of the downtown to have the walkability and the retail focus on ground floor store prepared. But beyond that, there is, uh, less viability in, in requiring that upon property owners. They may still choose to do that, but with the interim ground floor retail, uh, all that would be doing is requiring certain, um, building design, uh, metrics to be applied, a little bit more of vaulted ceiling, um, and, uh, larger storefront windows applied to the appearance, so that, that way it still gives off the appearance that it fits within the commercial surface and certainly to have that adapted to use. And by all accounts, I, I have heard anything that it's not viable for. Which I think was the original point of your question.
Did, did developers say that they could, they could build and sell it if it looked like a store, but it wasn't a store?
Y- yeah, most, most of the lobby space for, um, residential projects have, like, ground floor locations for these facilities. Uh, so does it just accommodate that circumstance of what we actually see and can you develop it? Um, but then just requiring, like, oversized windows and, I guess, a vaulted ceiling. Um, but all accounts, I have not heard that it's not feasible to develop. What is inflexible is the retail requirement.
And we've heard that, I've heard that just since we've been commissioned, how the Mercado project, um, essentially doesn't, doesn't work in that, in that area. Okay, uh, other questions? Commissioner Wiley?
Actually, actually, there really wasn't a, a question, but more of a comment. On this particular exhibit, um, the purple, it says interim ground floor allowed, probably should be interim ground floor residential allowed. I think that's what it says actually in there.
Was that the intent, that was the intent?
That, that is. Uh, and, and I'm a big proponent of this, I've seen a lot of, um, you know, things coming through the city, and great intention to have this ground floor, uh, office or retail. Um, I think it's a great thing, but it just doesn't perk all the time. Um, and this is kind of the evolution of our specific plans that were seeing that, yeah, well, we had, had good intentions, and it just didn't work the way we would have liked it. So, I've been a proponent of this for a very long time, so I'm, I'm glad to see that come full intention.
Other comments, questions? Vice Chair Raining?
No, I just agree with the staff recommendation.
Um, so let's, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution that stands out with the addition of the, uh, in the map legend, to approve the word, um, residential, uh, clarity. Roll call?
I second that.
Hang on, Commissioner Serrato? Oh, you second, you second the question? Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Raining, will you bust through something?
No, I was just gonna second it if he hadn't, so no problem.
Okay, we have roll call, then? Chair Barbe?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul? Commissioner Paul?
Uh, no.
Vice Chair Raining?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez? Commissioner Serrato?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Your vote is six to one, Mr. Paul voted no. Okay, do we need to take a break? Uh, so you want to power through? Commissioner Wiley?
I guess it depends on the update. And if this, uh, this is a longer update, then sure, I think we can.
I would expect, oh, yeah.
Okay. My quick break? Okay, let's take five minutes, and we'll reconvene in five minutes, which, depending on what clock you're looking at, is, uh, twenty, was it twenty-two, ninety?
Oh, sorry, I thought you. Sorry.
Okay. 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 What are your comments? Let's convene, reconvene. Okay, the next item of business is the Housing and Community Investment Study. It's an informational update. No public comment, so your author, Director Strong.
Thank you, good evening. I think we chair, we know the study, the Housing and Community Investment Study. Just to put this on our, components of the study, it involves three different studies, all related. And in some ways feeding off each other. The housing element is the subject of discussion this evening. Uh, it's a systematic updated set for new strategies for the preparation and maintenance of the housing in the eight year cycle. The second is the O D A study, gets a positive development for housing types, and the subject is the definition of the last meeting. And the East Valley specific, where new, uh, those names from the zone between the East Valley area of the city have most of the new housing in this region from the regional housing. Uh, this is an updated master of private base framework with admission. One decision that the last meeting was not accurate. Uh, the East Valley specific plan overview, now this is the next meeting, or next meeting on July thirteenth. Um, the planning issue adopted by the community determination in the city council considered the housing element and the second feasibility will settle via agreement as an example to that, while this is currently on actual or item see forming certain determinations of the housing element. And then the East Valley specific plan, this means you essentially go on its own separate path uh, because of its required analysis of the draft V I R, this didn't look like it's longer to prepare a full analysis of the project's physical impact on the environment. Primarily because it's gonna be a self-measuring document for streamlining future development projects. So it's not just programmatic, it's also spreading impacts of the analysis of the product. Uh, so this is the updated calendar, this meeting has needed more information leading study sessions required about the survey. So the housing element is a component of the digital plan. It is typically the scale of, and it's it's done over the course of the frequency of this update. Um, it used to be part of the updated diagnosis, and after S P two seventy-five, they moved to an eight year cycle draft. For some agencies, um, there's four years cycle draft, so agencies do not adopt some of these of the problem. Whether it's due to the reason of the program, uh, they're forced into a four year cycle. So if you do, um, agencies do adopt the housing element timing. So that's why the planning mission three days from now, except the deadwood statute is established eighteen months after it is supposed to be twenty to R T P, option regional transportation. Uh, same way, uh, the liver, the action of R T P, many of those plus two, so it's usually essentially have the surplus that will be um, that, that statute allows the extension of this period of the date. So the actual deadline is obviously to. Uh, so back in the city council, I've considered it to do a pretty valid, uh, attitude on the. Most of the update was focused on the funding, just the policies and programs to make sure they're still relevant. I'm sure it has changed in state law. And the big goal of this, uh, the changes really reflect, uh, I guess the most efficacious aspect of it is the lead is fair share aspect of the green, regional housing, and this is covered in the. Uh, this is the fifth meeting, uh, and primarily this is gonna focus on, um, the the outcome of the relief of the draft, uh, housing element and responsibility of H C D's companies. So, uh, the city can use the draft to that, um, housing element, uh, to the planning mission of the, um, version of the earth. And it's so focused to H C D, um, it's gonna say written by the, uh, this is a, uh, because H C D has the requirement to review, uh, the draft versions of housing elements and allows H C D's and those comments happen to H C D, uh, to help you in housing. And one nice element of how we, uh, what we do to review of the housing elements is we have a, um, strategy, um, and so fire the, uh, and what you'll see, right, is the actions, the spans, the number of comments. Uh, but H C D's staff, uh, have a, we follow it, so, uh, the plan, and, uh, the fourth seventeen, neutral period for the past two and a half hours. Uh, city staff, you know, this is H C D, based on this conversation, it's a kind of, um, uh, positive, um, H C D response, uh, meaning, uh, to the, the draft version, the parts, uh, so far, uh, basically in those statues. Uh, and those, uh, individuals were submitted on twenty-three, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one thousand one hundred. So I'm going to pull up a separate word document that shows all of the, uh, the, the, the comments. And this is outline from that from those discussions, it's in that conversation that City's staff has the, uh, the, the, the. Uh, but this just shows that this is a, uh, analysis, um, I am, uh, this presentation can take a half hour. I, and it, uh, this presentation can take, uh, a half hour, uh, just not a mission thinking, uh, going through all this, because you can see that the, uh, the, uh, especially for the, uh, street, uh, HCD applies, uh, to the, uh, but you can see that it's pretty long, so I don't, I don't know necessarily if it's, if it's a technical technician, it's sort of an arachnid direction to do this, uh, but it is, it is something that it scales not only, uh, the analysis, which you can see on our last slide, uh, left, um, but it ranges from expedition, the narrative, the background analysis, and appropriate, uh, and the analysis involved, uh, so I'll, I'll probably focus on the, 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 the thing, but the ones that I'm going to focus on are probably the areas of HCD zoning, community that HCDs, and then have a fact in this section, there is, there's some areas of, of, because that is a subject area of ongoing discussion, uh, so. So with, uh, the site analysis, um, there was a lot of scrutiny over how, um, HCD is determining appropriate yields for sites, for, for essential sites, um, and as I have personally, for example, if I have a HCD property, um, that has existing units on the property, HCD, uh, deal with, might have, for example, issues, a majority of the onsite conditions, um, a full, uh, analysis of the structure, property pressure, uh, into improvement of the issues, the support assumptions that could start over in the next few years. So obviously for the city, the decision, our side, that's a, pretty difficult order, because, uh, needs to accommodate, uh, plus the nine thousand six hundred units, uh, and there's a upper limit, so it's just a wide condition, uh, so part of the assumption, uh, is to demonstrate why mixed use, uh, would actually, like, so many areas where mixed use is required, um, to document any trends or factors, in zoning requirements that may, uh, make more problem, uh, version two of mixed use for revenue, same one property. Uh, other analysis, um, is to make sure that basically utilities are able to accommodate the site. A good example, uh, but often, uh, agencies will, uh, select sites or hightments, knowing that they're not going to be in that, because there's no sewer service, uh, so that actually does not suit for, 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 as constraints that, uh, so the city has to, um, analyze the wires, uh, of the site. Um, small site analysis, um, the lock installation, which is, is, uh, very, very, uh, something that, like, is really interesting, uh, the fact of the matter is that most downtowns have some laws, uh, that's reflective, uh, has policies and practices that has downtowns that are, to return, uh, especially, uh, early people, uh, in, uh, the, uh, there wasn't a lot of, obviously, uh, there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of, um, so a lot of the smaller sites are, um, people, uh, so the issue is, is that, uh, maybe, uh, um, rope, uh, rope, and, and areas to support downtown, um, facilities, but also the, uh, sort of, uh, the structure, uh, the sphere of, uh, but the problem is a lot of small sites are difficult to, and so the interest of state level is to more have lawyers, uh, to, to get small sites hard, uh, look at common ownership, uh, property, uh, property of, uh, common ownership, and that can be something that will involve, uh, but also potentially look at, uh, that's one area that we're going to be exploring, uh, both kinds, to incentivize, uh, so, um, examples are, incentives could range from increasing the core area ratios, or, uh, these partners, uh, to really encourage properties, properties, work, uh, and, uh, also, there were several examples that were utilized in, in analysis, um, when that was a particular interest of the special ID department, uh, so one of the issues provided in that site, uh, the other is, uh, I think I said it, uh, and on the analysis provided, uh, has to be, uh, uh, other examples, uh, the site in new capital, uh, this is another area where the state has been, uh, more assertive in pushing back the existing assumption of, uh, typically, this people, uh, the, 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 uh, 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 so that's something, uh, really obvious, uh, but, uh, and then it hasn't been, uh, the last several years, and I think this is, um, the process, uh, but only the credit that, uh, so that's actually, uh, uh, and then the other section which does tie into, um, the staff report, and, 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 uh, the, uh, further, uh, their, their, uh, and that's, that's a pretty, uh, 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 the biggest, probably, office for agencies is, uh, Fair Housing, uh, it's named, uh, traditional, and probably the most, uh, good practice, uh, 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 but which, which the city is, uh, actually researching, so, uh, city is committed to rejoining, uh, certain areas of the city, but it's being, uh, quite, now, is that the city has to look at, be something, uh, area to consider, whether there are any, um, gentrification provisions for, if there's more, uh, areas of, of concentrations, uh, probably, yes, in this, uh, period. So, the, the issue, uh, from, uh, is, the site suitability analysis has been, but also the research, uh, uh, as, uh, whole, uh, 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 the, the idea is that HCD has asked for a lot of changes, so don't just arise, uh, the, the, uh, draft, obviously, the terms, um, and, uh, there are a lot of sections that happen in place, uh, 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 there, there's a little variation, um, at one point in time, uh, they filed, uh, um, there was, at one point in time, where, well, ways, uh, considered, um, considered, uh, 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 now, where the, the, uh, 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 so, the, the, the time period, uh, 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 so all of the, uh, 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 so speaking of, uh, 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 is the fight of, uh, 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 the other piece of, uh, the staff report, which I mean, uh, is, is other changes that we filed, uh, 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 and the recent changes in state law, which means a lot of, uh, 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 requires agencies to update other sections of the, uh, uh, and I'm prepared to, uh, we should, uh, 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 a really broad, uh, 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 one is policy, uh, primarily, uh, uh, understanding, analyzing, what things, or, uh, 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 the other is high priority, uh, 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 the third is, um, uh, 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 so most of those three things, uh, 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 the fourth item, uh, 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 that requires, uh, 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 so the good news, as I go through this, uh, the good news is that the city has technical foundation to control, uh, 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 the city has, uh, 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 the area related to, uh, projects, uh, 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 the benefit of the review is, uh, uh, means a couple, uh, one, when projects are reviewed for, um, is, uh, the policy, usually, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 it comes out, uh, 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 but also, there's a, uh, 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 and so, uh, the bill also requires upon the next provision of the housing element, uh, that the conservation element also identifies seen water sources, uh, in land that may accommodate floodwater, purposes of bringing water recharge, uh, again, something that the city right, uh, 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 SB twelve forty nine, um, requiring to provide you the safety element for state responsible areas, vary, uh, vary, uh, 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 and requiring to update the, uh, 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 SB ninety nine, uh, requiring to, uh, 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 and then the last is SB three thousand, um, that relates to the, uh, 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 so, uh, the bill, uh, 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 so the good news is, like I said, we've done a lot of, uh, 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 so that is the public, so, uh, 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 reflecting with what I already did, uh, 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 and, uh, the mighty commission, uh, 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 and, uh, 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 questions, commissioners?
Sure, I, um, on the housing element, and I know that there's a draft that's on the city's website, um, when that, I guess, for us, as the planning commission, when do we provide you with our comments? Is it at the public hearing when this is presented, or should we be actually really reviewing this now, providing you with whatever comments beforehand, because we are under some real tight deadlines?
Um, the, the purpose of the informational sessions is twofold, one, for awareness, uh, so that the commission can be engaged, really in the process, understand what will be able to, uh, 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 cause as you know, is very, uh, uh, information, uh, and also the magnitude and size of, of the housing element, uh, so, large, uh, 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 the purpose of, of the, of the, uh, 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 so at any point during the process, um, the planning commission can provide general direction on certain items, um, formally, for public hearings, uh, so, that's where the commission has a full, uh, 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 but there, you know, discussion items on housing, I, I, I don't see why they would, uh, or, uh, 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 with a five channel direction on certain items, uh, so with that response, there's certain things that you would like to see, is how we'll, uh, 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 uh.
I, I noticed something in the housing element when, you know, was reviewing the staff report and everything for, uh, the hotel conversion, um, not prepared to provide any comments on it, but I, I did see in the housing element, there was discussion regarding SROs and some of these other things, um, so, you know what, I can give you comments separately or, or with this body, I, I'm just not.
Yeah, no, I, what I'd like to suggest, which if it's, if it's, uh, okay with folks, is to hold sort of a discussion session in our next meeting, um, that would actually take the opportunity to focus in and drill down on particular issues, I think, that you really care about, or that you believe need to be addressed, or, if you send us the chart, uh, uh, HCD review comments and requirements, that would be helpful to, to staff, uh, 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 we can't, I guess, it's not possible for us to see an interdate draft.
Yeah, I.
It's a really, exactly.
I, I contemplated that, but I got, uh, 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 cause I was very transparent, uh, every time I changed that, uh, 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 and it ended, the culmination of, uh, we have, uh, 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 uh.
It just gets really confusing.
And, 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 uh, 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 it created a challenge, and, and so, part of the benefit of, uh, 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 is that a lot of the things that this group made identified as issues might come out through HCD, uh, 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 so, there's the benefit of seeing what HCD has come in on, uh, the, uh, uh, I'm hoping, uh, 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 so, yeah, I, I guess, uh, 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 yeah, no, I, I would say it's just as an opportunity to have those conversations around what we see is important to possibly revise or, uh, uh, how's that suit, uh, uh?
Vice, vice, uh, vice chair Rainey, uh, would you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so note to staff to include an agenda item that would be to review the HCIS, I mean, the, the housing element as it is right now, along with materials that directors found, and, and we'll put it down in the next agenda. Other questions, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I just have one question, um, Michael Baker, how much are we paying him? Could that help?
Uh, there is a subconsultant to Veronica Tan, Veronica Tan's full contract is a hundred and seventeen thousand, I believe, uh, which is a pretty, very valuable price case, and I know what other agencies are doing, and I can tell you that Michael Baker's role probably far exceeds what they, uh, allocated, uh, cause I know how much time they've been working through the site's inventory component, which is their primary task, and it, like I said, I, I don't think anyone anticipated HCD's rigorous standards to be applied in this cycle period, because it wasn't as, uh, tight, it wasn't a pretty, uh, uh, a lot of the statutes have changed, that AFH.
A lot of the statutes have changed, the A F F A, uh, new requirements because it's brand new. Uh, it really, it has been a game changer for, uh, so I would expect if we scoped out these services today, it would be substantially higher than what is. I don't, I don't know. They weren't, they weren't meaningful.
Are there comments? No, okay. Thank you for that presentation, Director Serrano, it's very helpful. Um, and we do look forward to more conversations around what we believe might be things to look at prior to, uh, a public hearing for the commission on the final draft, uh, final drafting, I guess you'd call it. Uh, lastly, uh, no oral communications, uh, just general planning commissioners, any general comments? Questions? Anything good of the order?
I have the one item.
Uh, yeah. So, um, I have a number of things, actually, I'll just try to go through them quickly because it's late hours, ten o'clock, and I know, uh, vice chair Rainey is about to turn into a pumpkin. So, um, uh, let's see, first of all, just mention this, the community choice aggregation technical setting. Um, that was presented to city council in, what, last week? We're, uh, a couple of us were just curious as to why we weren't at least giving a presentation on it just to increase our awareness? Even though we, I know we don't have decisional or recommendations to city council, but just to help us understand because this is clearly an important feature.
Yeah, uh, the item is not, it's in a perjury. Yeah. But.
It is. I have not written myself up, just great. Okay, uh, so I, I had the opportunity to present in the webinar. California question, and it was all about, uh, something called P, Public Benefit Plan. Really thinking about inclusion areas, thinking about housing, but it's also thinking about, um, a lot of different approaches to housing and how, how, uh, some cities are actively providing examples. We talked about a few, uh, actual examples of how this has worked, how this works in other cities, uh, specifically L A and Oakland and the Bay, around the Bay Area. And it was hugely educational for me. And I, my question to you all is, is whether or not, um, one, like access, I think I have to provide the link for the, uh, it's a YouTube video, but actually if you're comfortable to, you know, read it, uh, listen to it later. And/or.
And/or.
Uh, I could, I could ask Nico Caladita, who, who is the, was, I know, eighty six session, uh, on, on public benefits planning. And it's a really useful approach and, and it's been helpful to us. We heard a presentation, you can, you can identify the webinar is one, an hour and a half. So, of course, you don't have to listen to it. So I leave, I, my question to you all is whether or not we'd like to have a presentation on this? Different, uh, aspects of public value, public benefits planning, uh, or if you receive them. Because if I try to get Nico on our schedule to for informational briefs, it's something we'll be doing, and I don't want to bother you all. This is all in the interest of education. Yeah, I guess, twenty minutes. Any thoughts? Presentation? Be helpful?
Presentation.
Okay, and I'll also provide the YouTube video link, but, um, I think it'd be great to hear Nico directly. All right. And, uh, let's see. So update on our subcommittee, we have a subcommittee now for, uh, green infrastructure, and we've met once, the group, Mike, I think it was today. Seems like. On sort of an approach to city council, they came up with a little timeline. So we will, uh, work up the, uh, much more directive, useful presentation that would, would likely be presented to city council. I think with, with targeted, July thirteenth, or whatever that planning commission. For us to share that with you. And then subsequent to that, I think, uh, we talked about, and towards the end of July, we would present that to the city council as well, as far as forward. Anything else, anybody? All right. We adjourned, thank you.
Hey.
Oops.
Uh, I, we did add a direct report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And there's probably something that, remember, was the first time I knew about.
Well, it's.
Well, the purpose is for, for the director to provide, um, report items out of interest. Like it's closed, so the commission doesn't discuss it. The interest is not to have it around that. So that's. Um, but with the July thirteenth, that is one, I think it was coming forward. I think that was requested from the mission. Uh, so on the thirteenth, it's kind of like the housing portion, the housing. And then separately, the heat size. Uh, the, then we scheduled, the commission also does, um, design review for the S U V for the trail. And then also the public item for Mercedes. Those are the two. And then the last item, I wanted to introduce, um, into different things, something. Thank you for your time.
Are there any comments from Mike's departure?
Absolutely, I got a comment. It was discussion, Mike said. Not a discussion, it's only.
Good night, everyone.
Uh, you know what, Mike, I, I really appreciate all the work that you've done for the city over the last several years. Um, you've done a tremendous job pulling together a lot of different, uh, interests out in the community to get a lot of the plans approved. Um, probably the biggest one and toughest one, at least, that I saw was the, uh, climate action plan. So I really appreciate everything that you've done over these last several years. And, um, it, it was just a tremendous amount of work. And so I thank you, you're gonna be missed, um, and I wish you the best in, in everything else you pursue, so, thank you.
Can I make a comment too?
Sure.
For Rainey, I just want to say, Mike, I had no idea, I'm a bit stunned, and you will certainly be missed, and thank you so much for all you have done for us. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the whole group, would like to say just a huge thanks. And really appreciate your leadership and informational support, certainly in our, my shirt, tenure. So thank you, and I'm sure Carl's bed is gonna be lucky. All right, thank you so much.
Oh, Carl's bed.
This, this, uh, meeting is adjourned.